Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we start this meeting, can I just advise you that this meeting is being recorded by the town council and there are possible live streams on YouTube. Please note that the recording device is sensitive and the live stream may be recorded by third parties, so do not say anything you do not want to hear from. If necessary, I will direct all recording in the room and the live stream to be stopped, but generally I want to avoid doing that. So we'll normally record everything except any item taken in closed session. Members of the public may also make their own recordings, but must follow our rules for doing so, including stopping recording when requested. Whilst we do not accept anonymous speaking at the public forum, members of the public who wish to speak but do not want their name published must please indicate this before saying your piece. Thank you. Okay, on to the agenda. Item one, apologies for absence.
Councillor Mary Jones.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest and requests for dispensations for members to declare any interest they may have on items from the internal and agree any dispensations to take. Item A, disclosable pecuniary interest, B, other registerable interest, C, non-registerable interest.
Chair, I'd like to declare an interest in item 11C. It's the ground from the behaviour show. It's non-pecuniary, but I'm willing to stay and answer any questions, but for any vote I leave them.
Thank you very much, councillor. Okay, moving on to item three on the agenda, minutes of the previous meetings of the town council held, first of all, on the 19th of December 2022, and also Monday, the 30th of January 2023. So if you recall, the December minutes, there was a slight alteration to be made, and I'm led to believe it has been made, and so I guess we need to vote again to approve these minutes. All those in favour?
We need a proposal.
Hang on, just realised that. Some would like to propose, councillor Hammond, second, councillor Brown, all those in favour? Carried. And moving on to the minutes of the 30th of January, which are now on the screen, ignore the draft going through them. In respect of seat 23004.
It's the next item.
Next item, okay. Moving on.
Will you go to the...
I do have a brief email to read out from the community management. Shall I do that now, or... It's on article on the agenda, actually.
Yeah. Want to have a partnership?
That's on the agenda as well.
No, it's coming. That's not on the agenda.
No, this is what happened last time.
Yeah, this is just to approve these minutes.
That is.
Coming to stop, stopping the rest of it. Okay. Can I have a proposal for these minutes? Councillor Smith, second, councillor Brown, all those in favour? Carried. Moving on to item four, to know the progress of actions arising from the minutes not covered by this agenda. A, seat 22, week 145 ambulance response times. We've had a very long length of talk with councillor Stigman, and no doubt either himself or councillor Brown would like to make comment.
Yeah, first and last, thank you for that fantastic job there and a lot of analysis and statistical stuff. Yeah, we had the meeting with, over at Normandy, with the heads of the East, and, yeah, to be fair, it was a really positive meeting, and I think towards the end of it, they came round to our way of thinking, realised, found for everything, that there is a gap, whatever they do to response times across East of England, plus there's always this gap, changing sort of flows down. So they're going to come, we're going to have another meeting in a couple of weeks ago, in May, if you're still around. We're going to look at a lot of stuff that we talked around on the meeting, come back, and hopefully have an action plan, you know, to see where we go, but it was a really positive meeting, from what, you know, from what I took of it, it was a really positive meeting. And, you know, to be fair, Matt Hancock done a very good job of intervening as well, so, you know, where credit's due, he helps tremendously as well, so, yeah.
Any other comments, councillor Stigman? Any other comments from anyone else?
Why, why, three months seems a long time till a town like the meeting, did they give an explanation of why?
Well, to be fair, it was going to be two months, but the meeting, that ended up virtually on the election, so, so everyone was sought out around who was elected, who is etcetera, etcetera. I think Colin suggested that it went back towards the end of May, so the beginning of May, which was amazing, because what they was proposing at the beginning was the 2nd of May, which is obviously three days, four, four days for the election, so it's gone back to the end of May, it'll be in two months. And to be fair, there's quite a lot of stuff that they're, they're going to be doing in the meantime, which was sort of, you know, they're going to do an analysis with comparable towns in East of England, they're going to look at rapid response vehicle incident analysis behaviour, and they're also looking at cooperation with the fire service, there's some co-respots work with fire services, the actual fire service could come out to do some first responding, which they did try here about four years ago, which I think was of all success, but for one reason or another it didn't proceed, but they're now looking at that again. Also, they're going up to look at the operations centre, where they do the call handling, one thing or another, to see what happens there. And they're also looking at whether our actual position, Hayley Hill, being in the centre of the county, which shouldn't matter because it's the east of England ambulance trust, but there's different areas looking after different things, and we come this South Cambridgeshire region, which could happen, so looking at things like that, and several other bits and pieces, so it's looking positive. I'd say three months is a long time, but it's just now, now it is unfortunate.
I just feel there's just so many variables out, I don't know how to find a town as comfortable.
No, it's actually, yeah, exactly.
Every step's different, every situation.
The thing, it comes back to Fakenham, it was in a very similar position as Hayley Hill, and, you know, back, you know, last year, they actually put a responsive vehicle back there because their figures were going the same way as Hayley Hill's, and, you know, so I can't understand why there was a rapid responsive vehicle returned, you know, went to Fakenham, but it wasn't our one, but for some reason Hayley Hill didn't fit that criteria, and we're now looking at statistics, it did.
To be fair, they could have had an even more extreme problem than we did, but we, because no one told, no one communicates with us, we don't know.
Councillor Marks?
Yeah, just as you know, I sit on pretty much everything relating to health, including scrutiny, and Tony, I know, knows that we scrutinised East of England at the last meeting we had, and we did a robust scrutiny, and Kate Thornton has joined them, she's very honest and she's very focused, and we did raise the fact that our responder scheme here in Hayley Hill is amazingly well-trained, if you saw the training manual, you would be amazed, but they are seriously under-utilised, so that's going to be brought back into focus, and Kate's promised me that will happen. But the one thing I will comment, they have made, they have written a strategy, which I've made Tony aware of, and they need to read that five-year strategy because it does inform, but every single part of the integrated care system, the new plan is that all the systems will work together, the problem is that all of the systems that are required to work together are broken, so the doctor surgeries do not have capacity, the community care, we don't have any, the nurses are not, we, there's 2,000 midwives missing, so the ambulance service is picking up every part of the system that is broken, because they're the only place left for people to go, and they, their staff are taking incredible criticism, this isn't a criticism of you, Tony, please don't think it is, for these failings in the service, which are not entirely of their own making, and that has been made really clear to the integrated care board, that they have got to put more money into all of the other areas, and of course, one of the problems we have is doctor surgeons are private practices, they run however they choose to run within their contract guidance, and, and that also creates a problem as well, so it's not, you know, it's not entirely the ambulance service's fault that we are in this very difficult position.
We did make that point, that we was not having to go at them in any way, shape or form, we absolutely...
It's very tough, isn't it?
...do the great before they do, but whatever they do, there's a gap where Hayley Hill lags behind, and that's what we're going to try and catch up at least to what the average is, so that's what this...
I mean, to put it in context, only eight percent of the population survive an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest, that is grim, and it is below any other developed nation, so, you know, we have a long way to go to catch up really.
Councillor Stigman?
That may have been mentioned in my report, or maybe not, but we discovered that they have no proper software for really monitoring, I mean, obviously they know what their stats are, but nothing sophisticated to say, well, how much worse is one patch versus another, and they've got their hands tied behind their back, because they're not mathematical geniuses, why should they be? They're ambulance managers and crew, and they're, apparently the NHS England is only now sponsoring, have I got that right? Yeah, sort of doing the research, like what system could be rolled back to the various trusts around the country, so they've got their hands tied behind their back, they can't really, they have to have independent reviews every, as often as they can afford, an expensive management consultancy to come in and tell them how best to tweak things, so they've got a difficult job.
Whereas any other modern system, they would add up-to-the-minute data, you know, to the day, you know, whereas they're working back, you know, to be fair, in the 1960s, really, you're just using...
And they're losing staff, Tony.
Yeah.
And the staff they recruit are not equal to the staff they're losing, because a new recruit doesn't equal a qualified person, and so, and that's a point, as you've probably heard, I made to Kate, that we can't look at that as a comparison either, so I think we're all singing from the same hymn.
Yeah, we're also cautiously optimistic, you know, and they admit that they had their failings, and, you know, so hopefully things are moving in the right direction, but not quite as quickly as we would.
Okay, thanks for that, councillor Stigman and Brown. So we'll wait and see what happens in three months' time. Moving on to item four B, seat 2310B, repair to the rear extension to provision of storage.
Okay, so I have a note here that Colin and Slav Sagary is going to produce drawings, but the last meet, but the last meet and this, and these were too close together for this action to be completed.
So can we move on to the next meeting? And was there anything else from the minutes in meeting to report on? Okay, moving on to item five, reports from district county councillors on issues pertinent to Hayley Hill on the public forum, first of all, police report.
Okay, so I have a very brief report from Cheryl to say that she wasn't able to make this meeting tonight, so she's going to come along in March, and their priorities are theft of transit vans, theft from vans, antisocial behaviour, which has now moved to hairwood terraces and rural burglaries.
Thank you. Anyone want to make any comments? Councillor Burns?
I believe that I've been dealing with the police over the weekend regarding theft from transit vans with CCTV and everything, but it's really frustrating that the police hands are tied, the local police, I don't have a word with higher up the authority, is that they can't even place simple MP4 files, they have to go to their IT people all the time, so when they're trying to see if something's there, they actually have to go, I mean, a police officer stood up a shop in St James Square, at the convenience store there, about four hours sitting there watching CCTV, which is scandalous waste of time, really should be able to get that information and send it off to somebody else, and it's, I think it's primarily because, you know, CID, the best one in the world, seem to only, I'm sure they don't, but if you don't like working beyond nine to five, which is, which is a scandal, but also, more importantly, and I'm a bit unlucky to find out why, we have very few police officers in town, I think there were only three over the weekend, although they did respond to an incident at Cavendish, but this particular officer was supposed to finish at midnight, and he eventually finished at six in the morning because of a drunk driver, so, you know, it is, I feel sorry for him in many ways, but it's not, it's not unique to Suffolk, it happens all over the countries.
Thank you, councillors.
Look, you did, I'm sure you gave any indication why airwood terrace is a problem?
Not on the same side.
It's related to another location that we spoke about before.
Councillor Roche?
Yeah, something to press, we've asked Cheryl to look at all, whatever, this graffiti artist, gaps six or whatever, do we know anything further about that, it seems to be prolific at the moment.
I don't even know what gaps stands for.
No, but it's being sprayed everywhere.
Tagged.
Yeah, it's a tag.
Tagged, they're going to tag.
I know, I know what that is. G A P S stands for.
That is a tag.
Yeah, we've done all the ways.
That's a tag, that's what it is.
Right, okay, no, no doubt we will find out more when Cheryl visits next month. If we can move on to county councillors' reports, we've already had the report from councillor Mason.
Yeah, Chair, I'd like to add to it, there's been some developments today, and there are some things that I'd like to make on the, on the public record in addition to what I've done, so if it pleases the council, just like to go through some of those, not all of it, and give the council an update on a number of issues. I'm going to start off with Persimmon North West Hayley Hill. Okay, so works continue, I had a walk around 2B, and particularly interesting, but whilst I was there, I was having a look at the construction site, and I saw two diggers, one digger moving very little soil on the proposed relief road. Okay, I'll talk about the relief road shortly, but needless to say, I've got some very grave concerns about that. It's been made aware to me, but there is a public consultation regarding the local centre, we weren't notified that as members, Persimmon have put that on their website, and very inviting members of the public to have their say what should go at the local centre. It is worth noting that in November, I had promised a consultation at Hayley Hill Arts Centre to happen in November of last year, that has been delayed, I'm still waiting for a date. I'm talking with planning officer Penny Mills, I'm very much of the opinion that we shouldn't be looking for Persimmon to be submitting an application without that consultation taking place, I think it's very important, but local people have a local say in how that local centre develops. I'm also waiting for an update on the highway, they're from highways regarding the S106 infrastructure, which is the cycle lane along Ancybling and Rattin Road, crossing point of speed mitigation, and the Toucan crossing on Rattin Road. These are essential works that will make transport and pedestrian safer when Persimmon side joins on to Ancybling, and this has been delayed, and I know highways have been trying to negotiate with Persimmon's most cost-effective way of delivering it. That report is imminent, as soon as it is in my possession, I'll share it with members if it doesn't come to you first, but again, a lot of frustration regarding the time and manner in which things are being done, which brings me on to the relief road, because there's been some developments today. Now, putting this in context, in November, I was being told that the relief road would be delivered for March 2023. In December, it was quite clear that wasn't going to be achieved. In January, we sat and we had a meeting to discuss phases four through to six, where we were told that the relief road wouldn't be completed in this year, and that it would likely be completed next year. Now, that, that was the first time that I was told that we wouldn't be hitting that march, as far as the residents of Hayley Hill North, they were going with what I said in good faith, and it's with some frustration that we now find that Persimmon aren't going to hit that march deadline officially, and they're not going to achieve it by the end of this year. Yes, the, the delivery of relief road is absolutely crucial to the development of Hayley Hill and to take off pressure on Withersfield Road. I have members of the public residents complaining about fumes in their houses, and any delay increases the chances that those fumes will continue. Obviously, being so close to the road, there's always going to be traffic there, but the point of relief road is to relieve the quantity of traffic passing through Hayley Hill, and it's with some frustration that, you know, I sit here today informing members that Persimmon are not hitting their obligations of hitting their target, which was March 2023, five years from the beginning of the construction. Now, Persimmon have also said that in the agreement, it's the 500th dwelling occupation, but the agreement clearly states...
It's five years.
Clearly states, five years or the 500th occupation, and to be honest, I, I feel that whilst they have explained some of the delays, I think that it hasn't been, they haven't been generous with sharing information in a timely manner, so people of Hayley Hill can fairly understand why there is such a delay, and I've come here today to express my frustration of the poor quality of communication as wardmen of the Ivory Street from Persimmon. I'm going to be taking it forward to West Suffolk Council, and I'll be speaking tomorrow, raising my concerns about Persimmon's failure to deliver for March 2023, and I'll be taking it to Suffolk County Council as well. Today, I received a timeline from Persimmon, this hasn't been agreed, but they've suggested for the completion date of January 2024, which isn't as grim as perhaps I am fearing, but when I first heard of March, and my initial reaction is, well, if they don't hit March, April, May, June or July is reasonable. For me, January 2024 is too late, and as I said, five years from the start of construction, we should see that completed this year. And my concern about January 2024 is that if there is a harsh winter, if there's a bad winter, and we know that a week before Christmas, and over the Christmas period, nothing will be getting done either, I have serious concerns whether the January 2024 could be hit for that same reason, if we had a similar cold snap to what we've had this year. So one of the things I wanted to do was update my report, but also express my frustration that I've had to come to the council to, to kind of share the delays, but I think Persimmon should have done publicly and shared the worst much sooner. I know councillor Roche has had some difference with this, so I'll defer to him.
Councillor Burns, then councillor Marks, then councillor Roche, then councillor Brown.
Thank you, thanks for answering. Just one thing, I'm not sure that link is a bit correct, there's a W in the middle of it, but it may be correct, I haven't clicked on it yet.
I, I can send it somewhere.
Yeah, just, just be aware of it anyway. And I think with the, the local centre, by the way, there was an email went out, it appears I only went to the planning committee and go to all councils...
I copied Joe into all of those.
Which, which actually was about this consultation...
Fourteenth.
Um, ridiculous, something, but that's by the by, and I did bring it on Facebook as well, and there's been a few comments, unusual trials, like, I'm going to call it that. Um, yeah, I mean, the S106 infrastructure, we know, the relief road, you know, we've been waiting 51 years for the relief road, I've been on to this for the last 20. I have some sympathy with Persimmon, not protecting them, because the problems they've come across are not what they're making, they are because the utility companies have got gas lines and water lines that are not in the place that they should be, and they've got to do a major crossroads over it, and the big problem is, the utility companies are not, basically, I've heard, are not responding to, you know, job requests, big too. So having it in January next year, you know, fact we waited this long, I'd much rather get it right rather than have a problem later on, and I understand the frustration, you know, I've been going on the battle with this field road nitric oxide levels for about eight, nine years now, you know, I did try to get it into a special zone, but they kept me, referred me, no way to do that. So yes, it's a, it's a real shame that it's going to happen. The only good thing, which may not, you know, be relevant, is that hopefully we can get the Royal Angry Regiment this time, because they're on the board at the moment, so come early next year, we might have them, which would be nice to officially open the world when it is open. Thank you.
Chair, can I come back to one point, councillor Burns, maybe, as it's related to my report? Thank you. I understand some of the difficulties that Persimmon have had, one of my main bones of contention isn't just that there is a delay, but the lack of good communication about this delay. I do not believe that in November, they didn't know that they were going to hit the March 2023 deadline, and I think it's really important that we ask Persimmon to improve the communication and the liaison, so that the information being shared with the public is at least factual and realistic, and, and, and doesn't lead people down the garden path of expecting something that isn't going to be delivered, because I think reputation, we can all suffer by saying, yes, March is the deadline, yes, they're on course, and then suddenly we find out later, not, and my fear is the public will just get frustrated with what they've been told from members who are sharing information in good faith, so I'm a little bit suspicious that the quality of communication didn't, wasn't good enough, despite some of the challenges that they may have faced.
Chair, can I just come back to you quickly? I was told that the West Suffolk planning department were going to issue a press release on this, that was about three weeks ago, I've not heard anything since, after they spoke to Persimmon, so maybe that's the avenue to find out why they're not issuing that, because we need, you know, the public should be told what's going on.
I can, I can answer that. So there is a press release, and the reason it didn't come out earlier was because we just couldn't get the wording right, and we hadn't had the response from Persimmon, so, and so, so today there was one that was going to go out, and it was, it was wrong, so we've been doing a lot of work today going through that press release, we've had a two-page list of excuses from Persimmon as to why they couldn't have delivered it, the major one being the gas and the water, but in five years since they took on this and they knew they were going to do it, it seems absolutely bizarre that they didn't know where the utilities were, and they hadn't done the work to find where they were, and we know in general utilities mapping is pretty poor, and they're normally within two to three metres of where they think they are, but by the by, they knew from the start that that road had to cross gas and water mains, so, so the upshot from it today is portfolio for planning is that I'm meeting with Persimmon's later this week, along with the director of highways from county, to talk to Persimmon's at Ancybling, so there will be a press release coming out, and you should see that, should hit you tomorrow, so it is coming out, but there are quotes from Joe and myself on there, and I'll just, just tell you what I've said, so that you know, and it says, "I'm extremely disappointed the relief road has not been delivered to the promised timescales, and I'll be meeting with Persimmon to emphasise the urgency for this road to be delivered. Persimmon have given its assurances that it remains committed to delivering the road, and we understand how important getting the relief road is to the town and our local communities, and West Suffolk Council is a local planning authority, and Suffolk County Council is a highways authority, and monitor this very carefully." So although Persimmon have issued a new timeline for the work, it hasn't been agreed, they've just told us what they're going to do, so we're, it's now going to go through an element of scrutiny from both West Suffolk and county council highways, because it's, it's clearly, you know, we were all led through the impression that, yes, it was going to be marching, all of us that, that go past the site, we all knew really that there was just no work going on, so, so that's where we're at, so we've got a meeting later on this week, and then we'll see what will go from there. But it's been, been extremely... But it's been, it's been a really extremely frustrating day today.
Thank you councillor Roach, councillor Marks.
Yeah, David Stolen part of my thunder there. But I think from my perspective, and I declare an interest here, I am, and Withersfield Road impacts on me very heavily. It can take me 15 minutes now to get out of my drive, which is really quite worrying. And it can be also quite dangerous trying to get out of there now. But, you know, when this planning application started, and I'm talking back when Tim was alive, the goalposts have consistently moved. It was one property to be sold and then, if you look, go back to it, what bothers me is where is compliance in all of this? You know, and where is, where are penalties for this compliance? Because if we're not putting robust penalties on these, and I liken this very much to a road I was in in Hayley Hill the other day that has not been adopted. And the people in those streets have now been asked to pay £5,000 each, and they're pensioners, before county council will adopt the road, because there were no penalties for people who didn't make roads to a required standard. I thought we had overcome these problems, and therefore I thought we had overcome the situation when we, when we determined with planning that things would happen in a timescale or in a particular way or to a standard, that if they didn't meet those standards, we bonded those people. And actually, we could move in and effectively do the work ourselves if that wasn't happening. But nothing is happening on that relief road, Joe. I'm quite happy to accept that there may be challenges with the utilities. But actually, nothing is happening. And somebody has very kindly been flying over it with a plane to evidence that. So I think it's all very well with the softly, softly approach, but I think the time has come now. It would be on softly, softly.
I wasn't sure I was being softly, softly.
We are being softly, softly. And frankly, we need some penalties, we need absolutely, they need to go back with compliance, and these people need to get on with the job, because that's what they agreed to do, and that's why they are being allowed to have that planning.
Before we go to councillor Brown.
And just in relation to one aspect of the councillor Marks men, I mean, certainly, I am most frustrated and annoyed, and I am chasing at West Suffolk and following this through at every opportunity, because I want this delivered in a timely fashion. In one way, in one discussion about compliance, one of the issues is, and I put this to highways and I put it to West Suffolk planning, is the agreements that are formed need to be ironclad. And unfortunately, there are too much scope for developers to just sneak out. So the way it's being presented to me is this is a technical breach of the agreement, but for it to reach a legal threshold, they would have to favour a number of other things. And for me, but perhaps some of the paperwork, the agreements, just don't stand up to scrutiny and give developers an opportunity to do things such as this. Thank you.
Councillor Brown.
Right. I'm living, I'm living with this. I went over and spoke in objection to this application in 2014 at the West Suffolk council meeting. And I said that we had major concerns around, you know, the delivery of any infrastructure associated with that development. Chris Rand stood there and said, "That will be started, and that will be delivered, and no questions, no ifs, no buts." And it isn't just the developer's fault, it's West Suffolk council and Suffolk highways, they should have been looking over their shoulder the whole way through this process, not waiting until the five years, then saying, "Where is it?" They should have been over their shoulder, say, "Job." You know, I'm absolutely blinking livid, you know. We said this, our concerns, you know, back in 2014, and West Suffolk council and the Suffolk county council highways have been absolutely, yeah, I could use the word, but I won't. I'm absolutely outraged, I tell you.
And councillor Burns?
Yeah, I agree, Tony, I was there at the meeting. I recorded it, in fact, audibly, I've still got to record it somewhere. And that's the meeting where I said that the S106 wasn't worth the paper it was printed on, because it was such an awful legal document. And I've mentioned this so many times, that there is no obligation for any developer to build that road. It's all should, not will. I said this at the time. But I think also, again, I'm not, so I'm not protecting Persimmon, but remember, this has been five years, as you quite rightly say. About three years of that was delays due to highways reviewing 250-plus drawings, considering they actually gave reserved permission back in 2015. Why they've not done then, I don't know. Armacultural stuff, deciding whether to pick a tree, that delayed the project 18 months because of that. Because every time they got around to doing something, they couldn't do something because of, you know, trees and things. Landscaping as well. So there's been a lot of other things, other than just the gas and water mains. And this is, has to go back, as Tony says, back to the planners and the highways not following up on the requirement. And remember, the S106 was not signed by Persimmon, it was signed by investors and their conglomeration at the time. You know, why they didn't put their hand in their pocket and just start building the road eight, nine years ago? We'd have had it up and running by now, before any house was occupied. We said so at the time, and they just totally ignored us as usual. They build a nice relief road in Berry, funded by West Suffolk council. We asked for the same thing, remember that? We asked them to get the loan, no, they refused, you know. So it's just annoying, so annoying.
Councillor Smith?
Yeah, just echo your frustrations. I mean, and it's not isolated, it's, it's, it's about anything we understand. We always end up with a watered-down version of it later than what then is promised. And being on the development trail of West Suffolk, we often ask for conditions to be put on planning applications, and we're told by the officers, "Oh, no, you won't be able to get away with that." And that's, that's frustrating, really. We want these things to be in there to make the water type, I'm not allowed to.
Councillor Mason, then councillor Hamlin.
I'm happy for councillor Hamlin to go before me.
Yeah, it's just, I'm obviously as frustrated as anyone, really. It's just what councillor Brown said as well, is it's, the officers, in a house, if in a house is built, the officers are supposed to go around and check everything. Why didn't they do that with this? Why didn't they, why did they just let it go? Is it because of the change of council from St Edmundsbury to West Suffolk? There's been a lot of changes there, a lot of staff has been got rid of. Is it because of that, and they haven't had time to go around and look at it? Or is it Persimmon not putting the people to work on these roads and not putting machinery in? Are they trying to save money for more profit for themselves? They, these are the things that should be looked at. There's something going very wrong with what's happened. And, you know, they're, what I've just mentioned, they're the things that really should be looked at. And then spoken the truth to us, that yes, it might have been the officers, something wrong because of all the changes and whatever, and the staffing, it could be that. Or it could be Persimmon trying to make too much profit. Thank you.
Chair, there's just two other things I wanted to mention as an updated report, but it just crossed my mind, councillor Hamlin, whether you'd be minded as chair of the planning committee to ask this council to submit a letter to West Suffolk council, kind of demanding expediency in the delivery of this relief road. Clearly, we want it done to quality, we want it done well. But equally, waiting to January 2024, I don't know how satisfied you are with that, knowing the likelihood of the impact of weather just pushing back even further. Today, there were two diggers on site, and one was just barely within any soil whatsoever. If Persimmon were serious about the delivery of this relief road, that would be chopper block, and they would get me cracking on with it. And I don't know whether you're minded to, but I'll defer back to you as chair of planning, whether you would wish to propose that.
Yeah, with the permission of the planning working party, yes. I can't see why we can't do it as a council.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just referring to your position as chairman of planning.
That's the thing that I would prefer, because I feel it's got more power than a working group, so.
Well then, do you mind if I make the proposal that the town council writes to West Suffolk council to seek the completion of the north-west relief road, to be completed in a timely fashion, a timely manner?
Suffolk highways as well.
And to put the, you know, the work effort into it, and also the.
To be completed in this year.
The amount of people and machinery.
Absolutely.
I think that them wording should be said, you know, it should be actual wording of them sort of things that we should have.
So that was a proposal, who was seconded? I saw about three hands. Are you making?
Well, I was going to say, it's not, don't get confused between Suffolk highways and Suffolk strategic planning. It's the latter that we should be looking to, I would hope you'd second anything like that.
Okay, that taken on board. Everyone in agreement? Show hands. carried.
Who's seconded?
Councillor Burns.
Chair, could I just add, I think we should also ask for robust compliance on this, because that has not happened. And that, when they parceled up the land, when it was one person managing it, it seemed to be better. But as soon as they split it up, we knew this problem would happen. And every time they split it up, it seemed to create a greater problem. So can we please ask for robust compliance? And they need to have some form of penalty. It's no good, it's no good telling somebody to do something unless they've got some teeth, is it? If you're not going to penalise them for not achieving it, then what's the point of telling them to do it?
I shall try and do the next two points with brevity and keep it short. Firstly, the delay to the repairs to the road are outside spec savers. I believe councillor Licarini originally reported it. It was something that I followed up, because I thought it needed barriers urgently, and those barriers were put out. It was then dropped off the system and left beyond the 10 working days. And I was most frustrated, and when I brought it to the attention of the highways officer, it was no longer on the system. It was then fixed, but one of my ongoing complaints with highways is repair jobs taking beyond the amount of days given as a job order. And that seems to be happening quite a bit at the moment. I've got a particular concern at the end of Queen Street, where the crossroads are, where Swan Lane joins Queen Street. There's an exposed metal structure where the brickwork has subsided. Anglial Water are tasked with repairing that, and they've given it a 60-day repair, which is roughly two months. 60-day repair, it's a tripping hazard, it's potentially damaging to tyres. I've requested from highways that they temporarily put some filling in to at least protect users and pedestrians. That wasn't, I wasn't able to secure that as a guarantee, but the highways officer was going to ask for it to be done. I'm actually really quite concerned about the danger that that particular defect has to pedestrians and to vehicles, because it has got exposed metal. But I am chasing that, and I'm monitoring it. But 60 days work order for Anglial Water to repair it. What can I say? Thank you, Chair. My report otherwise stands as a, as a stamp.
Thank you councillor Mason. So we seem to have covered county, district, everything. Before we move on to you, can we just see if there's any other county councillors?
Just a couple of little bits and pieces. So I'm restarting going out with a highway engineer to go around the town. So we were doing it pre-COVID, and that's going to start up again this week. So it should have been today, but the engineer was sick. So just going out with him and looking at all the different roads around town. So not specifically just in my division as a camp, but just going around town with him and picking up as many defects as we can. And that used to work reasonably well, so we're reinstating that this week. Really has not much else to add, because everybody else has covered it in their reports.
Chair.
Well, I was only going to say, not this last weekend, the weekend before, I think it was, councillor Furman, I'm looking at, we had highways drove down the High Street during on Saturday, and not aware that the road was closed. And their sole job was to go and check that road signs were still in situ for roadworks that were on the highways reporting tool. We all know highways reporting tool is just worthless and useless anyway. I don't know how many times I've told cabinet that when I was a county councillor. I was pleased to have talked that way it was done, pothole fixed. But they never touched Millfield's way, even deciding to have a proper road closure. A big thing about road closure, did one little pothole on the whole road. So I'm, they're just disappointed. But I understand that Kier's lost the contract. And it's in six months' time, somebody else will be in. So I'd be interested to see whether they'll get any better.
Okay, is that everything on county? This is on county?
Yeah, this is a report from councillor Roach, question. Yeah, you know the Dudley Hill just outside the back here?
Yeah, yeah.
There's dangerous potholes there that I saw an accident nearly. They're swerving out to avoid that, and there's cars coming down the hill and nearly hitting cars, because they're really deep, they're really deep. So I'm just emphasising that point to you, if you can join this one.
I'm actually, it's Joe's division.
It's very close, they're across there.
But it has been recorded, it has been recorded.
Councillor.
So it was reported on the 13th of January, on a 20-day work order.
Is that the big one across the road?
Bizarrely, there was another smaller pothole near it. Suffolk highways come out and filled that one. They paid a traffic management company to come out, they were there half a day, setting up road signs. Filled one pothole, took all the signs down, went away, left the huge craters behind. It's just madness.
I don't mean to correct councillor Licarini, it's interesting the language we use sometimes, a 20-day work order. Because I actually used that phrase, and I was corrected by highways, no, 20 working days. So it's actually worse than 20, 20 days. Well, I'm sure you're aware of that, but it's interesting, the language we use. It sounds sometimes less than what it actually can be. Councillor Marks?
Can I just ask councillor Mason just to update us on what's happening outside the cinema? Oh, sorry.
We had this.
The police actually approached me and asked me if we could do something, because although apparently there is TRO on that area, the people, the police guys, I can't remember names, the enforcement guys, can't follow it, because it's not on their map. Which is kind of, so they can't stop all the lorries parking on the roads there.
It's bizarre, so it is being dealt with, and they're looking to get it onto the map. But there is a TRO, but there's no time plate there. There used to be a time plate on there, on a post, but it is being looked at to try and get that reinstated. But they're not being very swift as usual.
It's currently with the speed and safety and speed team at highways, and they made the decision to ask whether it gets put on the map. If there was a TRO that was never put on the map, as soon as it is, the sign will go up, and it will be properly reinstated. It needs to be done.
Well, my pet project, you know, the, West Suffolk are just not answering things properly. I mentioned this three, four years ago now, that it needed fixing. It was perfectly legal before they brought the new TRR up. There was no problem at all with that, they were readily ticketed there. The problem is, it just wasn't added to the map. But the TRO, which is still in force, actually says you cannot park there. But West Suffolk officers will not enforce unless they see it on a nice graphical map. They can't read TROs for some unknown reason. Same as Queen Street, it's actually the same with Queen Street, exactly the same with things like the title and round the back of Station Road. But that's, Station Road is actually on the map, and they won't enforce it there either. I just get so frustrated with them not talking to local members, as I said to John Griffiths on an email recently, is, "Come and talk to us." Actually, you come and talk to us, you know, you don't know, somebody sat in Newmarket doesn't know what we do here, what the topic is like there, which is not only causing problems, people shouldn't be parking here, lorries can't park there, they've screwed up all the, you know, certain owner there actually dumped parking on the pavement, so you could bring that near his business. Scandalous, much scandalous.
Okay, if we can move on from county to district councillors' reports. So I'm guessing councillor Mason, you've come back?
I think I've said enough this evening.
Okay, and we've had the report from councillor Burns. Has anyone else got any other comments to make on district council? Councillor Smith?
As you mentioned before, we had an entire crowd enter the town, and obviously, we were pleased to have them here, but they were here, and they saw 50 people, which has been, I mean, it's over two visits now, we've seen nearly 100 people to get treated for emergency dental. Right, so 100 people out of pain now, which is, which is good. Pressure by residents about the lack of services for young adults with learning disabilities in the town. You know, that I spoke to, that was before, about the fact that people have to. You know, that was, I spoke to this before, about the fact that people have to leave to town, go to places like Supri or Forest Gardens or Cambridge for daycare for people that need it. We used to call them occupational centres. There is nothing in town really for people to go to. So there's hundreds of people, I don't know exactly how many people, but enormous amounts of money being spent in busing people out of town to do these services. We really need something in town. So I've tried to chase that up for a resident. We'll leave it there. Phil wants something else.
Councillor Hammond?
Yeah, just to add to dent aid, that fifty people was a dent aid record in one day in Hayville, which I don't know whether to be disappointed or what, but you know, that is, there's something going on that really needs, you know, the dental treatment in Hayville really needs something to happen to it. But just to reiterate what councillor... Sorry, what did you say? Just reiterate what councillor just said, that as far as the special needs is concerned and getting out of town, it's the respite that they need, the people that care them for them, that's so important. Now, I can't emphasise that so much, that they need these people to go to these centres so that it gives the people that are looking after them respite. You know, I just want to emphasise that. Thank you.
Councillor Maris?
Yeah, just very quickly on dentistry, because I don't want to bore you to tears, but dentistry up until now has been managed by NHS England, not by any local commissioning group. And that has its own problems because they sit in their ivory towers up in government and they don't really know what's going on. So that money is now coming down. The Integrated Care Board is going to take on the responsibility for March for dentistry. They already get, one of the things we discussed prior to them doing it was that they can't accept it as it is with the amount of money it has currently because it's just inadequate money in the system. So, you know, if you inherit something with a budget that's inadequate, you're going to have to have another budget in order to fulfil it. So they, it will come down with a bigger budget. There are already, and I can't quite remember the number, but there are a number of dentists being trained in our own universities here in Ipswich now for, you know, hopefully to operate in the areas. And dentistry is massively on their agenda. They do realise that the problems, if you don't look after your teeth, it informs and impacts on everything else in your body. So the Integrated Care Board will have that responsibility, which I hope will improve. You know, it's not going to happen overnight, but it will improve the service for us all. So that's, I guess that's something to look forward to at least.
Councillor Mason?
Yes, I'd just like to add on that, some correspondence that I received today. But I've actually creased you on, when you get a chance, if I look at the email. And it was from a family of, and some children in that family have never seen a dentist.
Fifty percent of children have never seen a dentist.
And they have dentistry needs and do not know where to go. And as a councillor, I find it very difficult to give them comfort and direction when they are one of so many people who at the moment are suffering. So whilst I'm really pleased that those fifty people were able to access the dent aid that was provided in the town, I feel it's the tip of the iceberg and, you know, the power to the Integrated Care Board, hopefully to try and get it resolved. It is a big issue and I know there's a lot of concern.
Now, just respond to that, that they do know that fifty percent of children have never seen a dentist. So they are absolutely aware and now it's going to be under the umbrella of a local organisation who will filter down. Then things, things will improve, but they don't happen overnight, Chair, and that's the problem.
Councillor Brown?
The thing is, with all of this, at the end of the day, the government have staffed all these organisations of money. That's an unfortunate thing. We've seen it right across the board from the whole time I've been involved in councils. Everything's been about taking money away, taking money away from here, robbing people to pay for. And at the end of the day, it's people like, you know, those poor people that can't get their teeth fixed, things like that, have a bad brunt of it. It isn't the people that have got, you know, plenty of money and making the best of themselves. It's always rolls downhill to people, like the Shoreda Centre's closing down, you know, what's happened with people's teeth? And the whole thing, it's just a shame, absolute shame.
Thank you for these comments. If we don't know our district councillors' reports, we'll move on to the next item. D, members of the public are welcome to make statements or give questions at this time. The floor could be yours, Harry.
My question is, well.
Well, good. Okay, moving on to item six, mayor's report, it's already been distributed. Any comments? Moving on to item seven, One Hayville Partnership to receive a call from the car.
So again, Colin has given me something to read, which is, the next meeting is the twenty third of February. So not been able to action requests yet.
Twenty third of February?
Oh, February, that's the sweet.
That is true. We haven't really noticed.
I'm not aware of that.
No. You've not informed it.
Can you watch it? I'm a bit shocked if I have to put these on.
And that's the Ops Group.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item A. A, on the agenda. Finance Working Party to move the adoption of the minutes of the Finance Working Party meeting held on the twenty fourth of January and the recommendations contained therein. Are you proposing, councillor Mason? Seconded by councillor Hammond. All those in favour? Carrie?
Who's seconded?
Councillor Hammond. Eight, B, Energy and Sustainability Working Party to move the adoption of the minutes of the Energy and Sustainability Working Party, meeting held on the seventh of February, and the recommendations contained therein. Councillor Brown proposing, councillor Sinchcombe seconding. All those in favour? Carrie? And eight, C, Planning Working Party to move the adoption of the minutes of the Planning Working Party meeting held on the thirty first of January. Can I have a proposal, please? Councillor Hammond, secondary is councillor Willie Smith. All those in favour? Carrie? And there is no.
Can I just say, I have typed them up, I finished them today. They are available to view if you wish to. If not, we can take it to the next meeting.
I think we take it to the next meeting. Moving on to item nine, Financial Matters to authorise a payment of list of sixty one thousand eight hundred and sixty eight pound seventy five pence. Can I have a proposal? Councillor Burns, secondary. Councillor Luke Rooney, all those in favour? Carrie? Item number, it says eleven, but it's ten. Grant applications, to consider any grant applications for funding from the twenty twenty two, twenty three financial year budget as the next leisure and community committee is too close to the pre-election period. Moratorium on funding for any recommendations to be accepted at the following full council. Ten A to note that the current grant budget remaining unspent and that approvals for grant sums beyond this will be paid from general reserves. So before we go into actually the grants themselves, my comment on this is, I don't think we should be spending money from reserves because once we've spent it, it's gone and we're already depleting it. That's just my view. And if anyone else has got any comment to make? Councillor Roach?
I have, I'm not necessarily uncomfortable with going into reserves to do this. My only, my only problem is, we're spending money for the next council and really it's them to decide how they spend their money. It might not be any of us. So we've spent this current financial year budget.
To make the current grant budget remaining unspent?
Well, we haven't got anything unspent, have we? We've spent it all.
Yeah. I think we've got some unspent, which is what? Which is the reach money that has been allocated that hasn't been requested.
And we're still over budget, aren't we? If you approve these forms that have come through.
I can't say that, John.
Because I forgot, I didn't mention it up. So what's the difference, sorry, between what we're asking to approve and what is left in the budget?
Thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty six pounds sixteen pence.
Including the three thousand from, which has, five thousand, okay.
As I understand it. So I think first of all, yes, if we look at the grant applications individually, bearing in mind that if we do approve them all, we will be taking thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty six pounds sixteen pence out of reserves. And as councillor Roach has quite rightly pointed out, some of these applications could perhaps be moved to the next financial year. And then it will be coming out of reserves. Okay, so if we go to ten B, New Proct, five thousand pounds for a new three G pitch. Councillor Burns?
I'm not going to get difficult to this one. I don't know what this five thousand pounds is for. The project is nine hundred and thirty three thousand pounds overall, okay? They did come to a meeting recently where they said they had spent five thousand pounds on our highways report, which coincidentally is the same amount of money that they want now. And I'm suspicious that is to cover the cost of that. First of all, it's historical, it's something they've already done. And equally, it really should be budgeted as part of that nine hundred and thirty three thousand. And I do have a problem. There are loads of other funding streams in town, across Suffolk, Hayville Community Foundation, sorry, Suffolk Community Foundation, Community Action Suffolk, for example. I personally don't like this one because I don't think it gets enough detail about what they're going to be using this money specifically for other than to build a three G pitch, which we all agree that it needs, subject to the, you know, because it says here, the funding could be allocated to a specific area to build. Well, they're not actually telling us what it's for. So I personally don't agree. I don't like this one. Thank you.
Councillor Mason?
The application, I think this is one of the ones, but possibly we could defer to the new council. I don't see it as time critical. I disagree with councillor Burns. I think having a small town council buy-in to a noteworthy project that brings real investment, you know, for us to be able to just help, even if it's a little bit as part of the total. And whilst I agree, I think it could be a little bit more specific as to what this five thousand pounds is going towards, I don't object to the idea that we are contributing to what is actually a significant investment in the town. And I like the idea that Hayville Town Council, even in a small way, is supporting the organisation in doing that. Having said that, I think possibly this is one of the ones that we could defer to the new council and in the interim, maybe ask for a little bit more of a specific ask for that five thousand pounds.
Councillor Maris?
I'm absolutely in support of this. They've raised over a million pounds for this town. And when this project originally, when the football academy was started, they had an ambition for thirteen teams. They've got sixty one now, they've got another thirteen or fourteen waiting in the wings. They want to extend their activities to their young children as well. And they also want to include disabled people and people who are disadvantaged. David and I had the, you know, the privilege of being involved with this prior to any application they make. They needed some information that they thought we might be able to provide. And also, I'm very connected with this team, so I do acknowledge that. I am really enthusiastic. We pride ourselves on doing things for young people in this town as a council. And we need to, you know, to put five thousand pounds into proving that we support this town in doing things for young people. We've just mentioned earlier about mental health and about, you know, the disability forum and so on. These people have put their heart and soul into this. And to me, five pounds from here really is a very small contribution. I'm absolutely in favour of it.
Councillor Hammond?
Yeah, I fully emphasise what councillor Maris had just said. I reiterate again, it's helping the carers as well. But my fear, councillor Mason, is they want to try and get this digging started in pre-season, closed season, as they call it, you know, when they're not playing. Because that will be less interruption for the schools because they're beyond holiday as well. So my fear, if we put it over, it might be too late, if you know what I mean. So, but I don't know, it's, perhaps we should ask the question, you know, but that's my fear because they really want to, because they're, mind you, they are being pushed behind as far as the planning is concerned. That's been pushed back. And I wasn't too happy about that, but they really want to start digging during the closed season. Nut words may be starting May time.
Do you want to come back on that, Councillor Hammond? Will the five thousand? Actually, did we have one to begin at a time, please?
Sorry.
Would the five thousand actually prevent them from doing that?
That is the question we should ask. I must admit. That's very important, actually.
As I said at the very beginning, any money that we're spending today is coming out of reserves. I, we've got a proposal on the table that we defer, but I think we also need to find out more as to why they want this five thousand. And it's not clear.
Chair, can we also communicate positively about how excited the town council are about this project and the contribution that this organisation makes? It is not a no. And in fact, I'm minded to absolutely support it. The question is, should we take it out of this year's budget and out of our reserves? Whether, is there enough time and scope for deferring it to the next town council? Especially if it's only five thousand. I think it's hard to imagine it would prevent them actually starting that work.
Councillor Burns?
Yeah, everyone's stopping to start their work. They've already got the money for the build.
Sorry, can I have one pass at a time, please? Thank you.
This is just extra money. As I said, I'm suspicious that it's actually paying for their parking survey, which was a part of the planning process. I think it's worthwhile reminding members that the planning working group has fully recently withdrew all the objections to the development. And I think that's shown that we contribute. And we have contributed quite a lot of money to H G S A over the last five or six years. New furniture, we gave them about fourteen thousand pounds towards their cafe facility. So it's not as if we haven't supported them. And equally, West Suffolk have done so to loans and everything else. So I think this is just, I think this is because they can, more than anything else. They haven't attempted to go anywhere else, which really bugs me for any application, not just this one. So I propose we, for this council, we have to, I don't think we can defer it because that's a decision for another council. I think we have to reject it.
That's the proposal. Seconders?
Can I just come back on to something John, councillor Bell's just commented on, please? I don't think it's fair to say they haven't been anywhere else when they've raised a million pounds, John.
No, but as they've gone to their football, they're not talking about other normal community funding schemes like Suffolk Community Foundation, like Community Action Suffolk, Community Chess. Didn't they come to us for that? They don't, I'm just saying, I've just given examples.
Councillor Mason? Point to the chair. I do believe that I was in the process of giving the initial proposal that we defer it to the next sitting of the council. Seeking a little bit more information and on the proviso that it didn't actually prevent them from starting work, which I find out, difficult to believe that this five thousand pounds in the sum total. So what I propose is that we communicate positively and favourably to them having applied for the grant application, but we defer it as a town council for it to be taken up urgently at the next appropriate time.
Seconding that, Chair.
Councillor Brown?
Yeah, the reason that it's been brought tonight is because of the time, the time sensitivity for the election. So we can't discuss it until the next council, the whole new council. Yeah, to be fair, I personally totally agree with councillor Marx, councillor Mason, but also, yeah, some of what John said. It'd be nice if it was some specific part of the project that we could put a name to. You know, I'm absolutely personally more than happy to contribute five thousand and they deserve it for all the hard work that they've done. And they do for the town. But it would just be nice to have a specific part of that project that, you know, we helped fund. So I don't know, but I'd hate for us not to fund it. So I'm open to suggest.
Yeah, that's called sitting on the fence.
Yeah, that's called sitting on the fence.
I've seen it on the fence. Well, not good, not good.
Perhaps some money for the fence.
I think it's a worthy cause. I think council should support it and I think we should do the grant. However, I still think that we shouldn't spend money that we haven't got. And it needs to be the decision of the new council in May to spend that money out of its budget and not out of this. And I think that's our duty to our taxpayers that we don't spend money we haven't got.
Thank you. So we've got a proposal on the table to defer from councillor Mason, seconded by councillor Hammond. All those in favour? Karen. Put your hands up here, please.
And I was against. He didn't ask for.
Against, one. Hit four, one against.
And Paul's abstained, sorry. You didn't notice the abstentions either.
There's two. One abstained.
Second?
One abstained. Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, would you like to leave the, not the building, just a room?
Chair, before you, I was slightly confused. I thought we had some money left because it doesn't say we've got no money left. And I can't quite, I can't quite read that because it gets a bit small on the board and I haven't brought my copy with me. Could somebody just please tell me, have we got any money left at all in the budget currently?
Can you zoom in on that, John?
Because we're talking, we're saying we've got no money left, but that's not quite what it reads here.
If you add up the five thousand, two thousand, the two thousand one hundred and sixty, the six thousand five hundred and fifty-four pounds, sixteen pence, they come to fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen, okay? If you then take thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six pounds, sixteen pence away, without my calculator, it means that I've got about two thousand in a pot.
So we do have a little bit in the pot?
Yes, definitely not.
No, no, no. Okay.
Fifteen thousand or whatever it is.
Okay, thank you for that clarity because it's a bit confusing reading that sentence. It would have just been helpful to have that figure.
Okay, moving on to item ten C, Hayverhill Show, two thousand pounds requested for pump priming funding for summer twenty twenty-three. Any comments? Councillor Roach.
I think we're in the same dilemma with all of these as to what do we spend that two thousand-ish pounds that we've got on. Vicky's got her hand up. She's got an answer.
So I think the Hayverhill show is in this, on this round of grants. Because of time constraints, if there's a new council, they might not get their money in time.
Yeah, because the show is in July.
Yeah, so if we defer and wait for the next, maybe the next council, they'll be different. Yeah, so that's just a point that I'm sorry.
Councillor Burns.
Yeah, I mean, conceptually, I don't have a problem with this because we have been supporting it. But I think, you know, about four or five years ago, we did actually specify that this would have to cease at some point. So it became self-sustaining, whether it ever will be. My only concern, and I may be looking at this from completely different way, is that we're giving them two thousand pounds and then they subsequently give a load of money to charities. Effectively, we are giving indirectly to the charities. And it does worry me that this is, and I fully understand why they need the money, is whether or not they should hold back money from their grants to see or whatever you want to call it. What was it? Pump priming to the following year. So it worries me that we're having to provide money now because potentially they didn't keep enough money back from the grant. Now, obviously, the people who get grants may suffer. But equally, if we didn't provide this money, they'd probably suffer anyway. So I'm a little bit worried about this.
Councillor Burns.
Timing wise, I do mind.
Yeah, I'm happy to support this. It's a big event in the town calendar. A lot of people put a huge amount of effort into this, you know, with pump priming. It's a big town event. It's a great event. I'm happy to support it. It needs to be paid now, otherwise we don't have an event. So I'm happy to propose that we give two thousand.
Can we provide a proviso as councillor Burns has admitted that perhaps they do need to hold back some of the amounts that they raise in future years?
But it's not given that they're going to raise anything because if it's peeing down the drain, they won't raise a penny.
Understood.
They spend a lot of money.
Councillor Roach.
I'm happy to second councillor Brown's proposal because I think it's a showcase event for the town. So I think we do need to perhaps see that. I think we do need to have that conversation with them going forward as to long term, how they do their finances and whether they do it. But it does give money back to small groups that wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity for any funding. So I think it's good for the town, it's good for the small groups. But I think we need to have that grown-up conversation later on. I think seal it now. And then later on in the year, we have that discussion with the management committee for the show as to how we go forward.
So we've got a proposal, councillor Brown.
Just one little thing extra, just not to go hasty, just to remind the members that on top of this, we also provide staff, so there's a wage cost as well to the council, which is never really hosted.
But it's not going out of reserves. Okay, so we've got a proposal on the table from councillor Brown to support and seconded by councillor Roach. All those in favour? Carried. Next one is ten D. Sorry, councillor Mark.
No, I'm just wanting, ten D is the one. I want to just have a word on that.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, can I speak on ten D?
Can we get Joe back first?
Oh, sorry, you need to get Joe back. Sorry, but can I just?
Well, how do you come to ten? Just interrupting me.
You asked me why I had my hand up and I said, because I want to speak on ten D. That was the answer to the question you asked me.
Okay, so ten D, it's a Hayverhill family cafe. Two thousand one hundred and sixty pound kitchen equipment for a warm hub. And if we wait for councillor Mason to come back.
Well, it's a question really, so it won't involve him because I'm going to ask councillor Burns a question. Councillor Burns, we sit on the community chest. Did we not fully fund this on the community chest? Of course, we approved it on the community chest. I know that they've all been given out now. So I'm slightly confused. It would be helpful to know what exactly we funded. I thought we funded the refurbishment of this. Can you look at it?
Yeah, no, okay. This figure here, the six nine two five is what we funded for the community chest.
Yeah.
We didn't fund the whole project. We reduced it down. But the problem was, when we had the application in, this expenditure was around about fifteen thousand, or less than fifteen thousand, I think. Prices have gone up because of equipment. So I think this two thousand one hundred and sixteen is basically the difference between what their original project cost last, whenever they put an application in. I mean, they closed in September, so they might put it in, you know, June, July last year. I don't know.
I couldn't quite remember how much we'd allocated, so.
It was absolutely amount of money, a cheque amount already.
Yeah, thank you.
And they do know that, although it says it may be reduced by value, it has actually gone to cabinet, council and everything. So I think they're asking for the difference between what it was budgeted at last year and what it is going to cost now.
So if I may just carry on, I'm fully in support of this project. It's warmer spaces for people at St Mary's Church. And it's separate from the church, which was something we had concerns about on the community chest as to whether it fell under the church because we're not allowed to fund that. I think it's such a used facility down there. It's a lovely area for people. And I think if they actually had a proper kitchen down there, it would be, and it's very central, which would be really nice. We've got the leyston and then you've got the chalkstone and then you'd have one in the centre of town as well. So fully support this. Again, I go with the members on what they feel about when we should fund it. But if we don't fund it now and we get another cold snap, then they haven't got a warmer space to feed people in. So I guess we're on a.
Okay, before we go any further.
So just picking up on what Margaret said about not being able to fund the church. We can't as a town council fund built-in appliances because that would come under fixtures of the St Mary's Church. But there is plenty of other equipment on that list. So there's a section eight of the Act of eighteen ninety-four that we can't.
And just to give you some background, councillor Mars, this is not for warm spaces. This is so that the church can provide food for people during the whole year, needy people.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. But it was also, well, it was also listed to us as also warm spaces, wasn't it?
It's one half of it there.
Yeah.
The other thing to bear in mind is there's still, there's no way that they will be able to get everything in place. They've got a builder looking at things at the moment. So I propose that we defer. Not say no, but defer because I don't think it is time sensitive. And bear in mind, we were right to spend the two thousand pounds that we had. So we're now dipping into reserves. Councillor Brown.
Reserves are there for things like this. I mean, they're not absolutely sacrosanct. So can you go one again? It's a time hardship for people. When, a few years ago, when I was mayor, oh, you know, I was in the town a long time and there was always certain people, always wonderful. Who looks after, you know, some of these people I see walking around, you know, town, some of the good people, et cetera, et cetera. When I was mayor, I'd go around, you know, different things at the churches and whatever. I found out it was the churches. The churches look after Hooverup, a lot of these people look after them, et cetera, et cetera. You know, helping with their quality of life, do a lot of stuff. So I'd be more than willing to propose that we give us money. Reserves are there to be spent for things like this. They can be made back up again. This is helping the most vulnerable people in our town. Absolutely, yeah, go for this.
I'll second it.
Councillor Mason.
I would just like to echo what councillor Brown has said. It's very interesting. On the poster, it shows that Reach is involved as an organisation in support of this. And I think that's the hallmark of something that is clearly a community response to the cost of living crisis where some families are finding it hard. As a teacher, I'm very aware of a number of families who are struggling with the cost of living crisis. And I think this is one of those exceptions where the reserves should be there to support these sorts of activities that people may well rely upon.
So we've got a proposal from councillor Brown, seconded by councillor Mason. All those in favour? Carried. And finally, ten E, Explore Outdoors. You've had the grant application, I think, came through on Thursday of last week, I assume. Obviously, this has come about because our clerk actually approached them. And the reason why we haven't obviously been given a grant in the past is because we have been asked to do so for the last three years. So now we're being asked to do this. And I think it's also important to point out that the amount that they're looking for in total, six thousand five hundred and fifty-four pounds, that's an assumption that we're feeding them and on the adventure. And I was led to believe that we're generally looking at feeding them. Correct me if I'm wrong. Not the adventure days. Councillor Hammond.
Yeah, as I reiterated before, earlier on, this is all about sort of helping them families. There's special needs, there's all sorts of, there's children. It's on holidays, half-terms, I should say, sorry, when they're, you know, away from school. As I said earlier, you know, their parents, carers especially, need a bit of time. And this helps, this all helps, you know, because even half, it may be half-term for the children, but it's more work for the carers. And this will go tremendously towards helping them carers as well, as well as the parents. You know, so it's, I feel we should take it out of reserve because it's a well-needed thing. It's important that we start doing it very quickly as well because I can't remember the next half-term, when that is. But I think it may be before the new council. I'm not certain, but I think that's where. So I propose that we get the full amount that they're asking for.
Just to picture in a picture, the next one is May half-term and then the next one after that is October. And then the next one after that is obviously twenty twenty-four. So do remember that if we just give the grant for May twenty twenty-three, then obviously the new council can look at future grants. If you look at that, it'd say it's only for May. It's too late for Easter, I believe. So move it down, move it down.
Sorry.
John, sorry, up. So ten, ten days, May half-term, October half-term, February half-term.
I was going to make the comment that I agree with you, perhaps we could split it up so that we could do some of the ground now.
So it's only one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine pounds, eighty-two pence. And I'm sure the new council can look at it hopefully in the new year, February, and it won't be coming out of reserves. So we've not gone too far over the amount that we need to take from the reserves.
Can I come back, Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. The thing is, this takes planning. I don't, obviously, maybe twenty twenty-four might be far in advance, but they, you know, this has to be planned. And obviously, when they plan, they need the money to forward it because they have to book these places, like in the forest and where have you. So it might be difficult if we only give them sort of for one half-term. That's the thing that I'm getting at. It might be difficult for them to plan the other ones as well.
Councillor Burns.
Conceptually, yes. My big problem is, you know, Abbey Croft is a multi-million pound organisation. You know, we're not talking about somebody who's scraping about, missing money. I'm also concerned that I believe, certainly in the adventure day, they just use a third-party company to do the work. So they're paying somebody else. I believe, I may be wrong, but I believe they use that. And we said before about obviously keeping their own people employed. They did apply for various other funds, but again, what they've done, they've come straight to us. They haven't, you know, said, okay, we've got other income sources, fifteen thousand eight hundred through the Department of Education. Remembering a lot of these are people who are on school bill vouchers, not necessarily everybody who needs these. So it may not be sent or things like this because they, you know, as Suffolk keep telling me, there's another fifteen percent of people who are desperate, who are just outside that school bill voucher thing, which is, you know, a crying shame. So they come straight to us for everything. Again, they haven't asked for anything else. I know it was a last-minute dot com application. I do wonder whether these, they don't put any dates on them. So, you know, it says May, October, February, then you assume that's May twenty twenty-four. I suspect that's May twenty twenty-three. I do suspect, but I haven't put any dates on them. The one thing that did concern me was, you know, Clare Community Primary School, Thurlow, okay, it's up, just up the road, Wickinbrook. So we're going to be funding, and this is what happens elsewhere, I've been told this at Brandon and Plaza, the town council is funding from outside, for people outside the area, which means that you lose the ability. So when they talk about two days for ten people, perhaps we could have two days for twenty people from Acre where, you know, but the villages themselves don't contribute at all to this. It's all done by the towns. I know Brandon mentioned it the other day when I was speaking to them. Conceptually, it's okay, but I do worry about the fact that Abbey Croft are doing this. They, you know, we brought it up at a meeting, I'll be barking myself, went to, is that we have a great kitchen facility here in town. They never, ever approach us to use it. Something that's not used to six days in a week, a hundred thousand pound investment. What a great place to teach kids how to cook properly and provide, you know, and we don't do it. The only ones that use it is mostly the friends who scream in Karen and Karen Chapel. So I don't have a problem with it. So I don't have a problem with it, in terms of the concept, but I really think that certainly we had to split it up, definitely. I think, I think Happycroft should be putting in some of their own money into this. You know, they make a profit now, I've been told. You know, let them, it's supposed to be a not-for-profit company, let them invest some money back into it. Thank you.
Councillor Hammond?
Yeah, just what you said about come straight to us, they haven't come straight to us. Um, they, they, they did a few years ago and we rejected it. Um, but, um, the thing is that the people in Haverhill were moaning, or the parents in Haverhill were moaning, um, because they wasn't, they wasn't invited to, to the last half term. Whereas the other people were in, in the, in the areas, um, that they done. In other words, the other areas that Happycroft do. But they never done it in Haverhill. So this is a thing that, you know, we've asked, I must admit, what I'm annoyed about is that they haven't asked Churchill. They haven't, you know, and I think we should request that. They asked Churchill School, um, which is very annoying that they haven't included them. We included the Ku- uh, the Wickinbrook, but not the Churchill. So I'm a bit annoyed about that. But, um, but I feel that, you know, we should go ahead with this. Okay, we, we should definitely ask about, you know, the twenty twenty-four bit, definitely, there's no doubt about that. But, um, I really feel that we should include the people of Haverhill in some sort of half term.
Not just you, it's.
Thank you.
Councillor Smith?
Yeah, I'd like to echo much of what has been, been said. Let's not forget, one point five million, over one point five million has been invested in upgrades to, to Happycroft from West Suffolk Council. And we've seen the quality of the buildings very significantly improved through investment. But what we want to see is a return in terms of provision and opportunities for young people to be doing activities. Young people with different targets, children with, uh, uh, SEM, uh, uh, provision, uh, children who have three school meals. Uh, we wouldn't be seeing any of this had we not invited them to actually send some information through, which then leads me on to my concerns about, they, they should be far more proactive in, uh, their projected give of what they're wanting to deliver for the people of Haverhill. And I, and I think this feels kind of after the, after the fact, or rather, while they weren't doing something, so they'll now put something together, present it to the town council, and they expect us to maybe pass that through. I want our kids to be doing stuff at half terms and at Easter holidays. Let's get kids active, let's keep them fit and well, and the mental health benefits that all of that brings. I'm just a little bit frustrated that this feels a little bit after the fact, and there isn't a proactive programme of planning, that they should then possibly see where are we going to get funding from? This kind of just feels that, well, if Haverhill Town Council pay that, then we can do it. And it, and it feels that, I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that they shouldn't usually be looking at other sources of funding, uh, not just Haverhill Town Council for this, much as I want all of these activities to take place.
Councillor Brown?
Yeah, I think a lot of this has just come forward because there were complaints made that, um, these activities were being, were taking place in Brandon, et cetera, et cetera, and not in Haverhill. Um, and, um, they did used to come to us, um, they, they got turned down one year, they never seemed to come back. So I don't know why that was, maybe due to Covid or whatever. But, um, you know, to be fair, the activities that, you know, they're putting on here is things that we really need to be doing for the youngsters, you know, in the town. Um, I don't particularly agree with us as Haverhill Town Council paying for, uh, you know, youngsters from Clare or wherever it is, you know, to come here. I'd rather, you know, pay for as many Haverhill youngsters, um, you know, their parents, et cetera, you know, the taxpayers in this town. Um, so I'd rather that, you know, the youngsters that were coming to events were as many Haverhill youngsters as we can. But again, it's, um, invested in, um, a youngster's future, and it's also giving parents rest of life, et cetera, et cetera. So I do absolutely support this. And I would agree with, um, you know, what was said around us only committing ourselves to the, um, next half term. But I am absolutely concerned that, as councillor Hammond said, that they've got a plan for the year. So by us saying that we're only going to fund the half term, we may miss out on the other, you know, rest of the year's events. So, um, I'm not so sure. You may know more.
Well, yes, I mean, if we, if we pay the money for the May half term, yeah, and then another application goes in in June or whatever, that we've more than enough time for them to.
Do you know that as a fact?
I work to Reach, obviously, so I know about this, and hasten to add as well.
If you can guarantee that you're holding a hundred percent back.
I can guarantee that. There are, Reach, Reach and Happycroft, obviously, together, um, orchestrate this. Hasten to add as well, quite a few times, quite a few times, there's ten spaces or so, ten families, and half of them don't even turn up, which is really such a waste.
Yeah, but that's not.
That's not, did you mean the organisation?
Exactly. If someone here can totally guarantee that we would just pay for this next May, it wouldn't interfere with future events, I'd happily just, you know, say that we paid for the May.
Councillor Burns?
Guarantee that's the case.
Well, I'm just going to propose we pay two one eight five, which is a summation of the one two eight nine and the eight nine five roughly.
I don't realise, councillor Hammond, that you're looking for adventure days. I thought it was just feeding.
No, it was, it was the, the adventure days where they, they go out to the forest and things like that. And they days out in the forest.
I don't believe we've ever done that before.
We have.
What forest?
Yeah, eventually, eventually.
Yes, adventure, that's what.
Yeah.
Councillor Smith?
Um, just to clear something up for you. You mentioned Reach. I didn't think that Reach had anything to do with this. What's, what's, what is Reach's involvement in this? But that was the previous application.
The only reason that Reach have become involved is a lot of the times because there's so much food left over. Because if the families don't turn up, then the food is going to go to waste. So they give it to Reach, who in turn can then give it out.
So Reach not involved with your organisation?
No. Councillor Rush?
Yeah, I think it's reasonable to fund the May ones. And having said, look, we're, we're where we are at the moment, yeah, we're at the end of the funding cycle. We're happy to do the May ones because we can do that. We haven't got the funds for the full lot, but please come back to us at the next council and we'll be happy to look at it. Because we're not saying no, we're just saying that we want it, we want to support it and get it underway with the first one. And then bring it back when we've got the money to support it.
Okay, so that's a proposal?
I've already proposed it, two one eight five.
Jay, could I sneak something in to the proposal? That we say that up to some proportion of whatever his budget is there, and that depends on the numbers in various primary schools, I guess, and church schools being missed or. The priority has to be given to Haverhill applicants up to that, what do you know, it might be eighty-five percent or whatever it is of, of that, that spend. And that would apply to the coming back for more as well.
Councillor Rush?
I, I think it's a merit in what councillor Smith has said. The parish councils, so Wickinbrook, Thurlow, both parish councils have got money they can put into the pot if, if they want. So I think Happycroft should be going and saying, if your kids are coming to this, then can you fund that? So the, so the parish councils do have money that they can give as well. So I think it would be reasonable to say to Happycroft, you need to, if, whoever your captain area is for those schools, then you should be going to the relevant different councils and asking for a contribution, not just the towns. So, um, but I think, you know, so let's fund the first bit and come back and, and give those proposals to Happycroft and say, go and work a bit harder on this, you know, you're, you're a C minus and you could be an A plus.
Thank you. So we've got a proposal to fund the May adventure days and the family park cooking, but with the proviso that we get a lion's share to Haverhill children. We've got a proposal, we've got a second one. All those in favour?
Who's the second?
Um, proposal?
You said the second proposal.
No. We're already pointed, so we're seconded. Put me, put me down.
The only thing that worries me though is what happens if they say, well, you can't just have that thing, we've got to do the whole year.
That's my worry.
And then we lose.
With respect.
With respect. Yeah, they might just say, well, we'll not have anything again for the kids in town.
Yeah.
But with respect, we missed out on the last one because no grant application was put in.
Yeah.
So I mean, if they put the application in at the very beginning of the year.
I'm not worried about scoring points of Happycroft. I'm worried about making sure that our kids get to do these activities. That's what.
But these are ongoing all the time. Councillor Smith?
It's going to be difficult because it, it, it's fine tuning our, our response. I totally agree, we want these activities to happen. But equally, a message needs to be given out. Where are you seeking additional funds? So it isn't just Haverhill Town Council that is funding this, because it shouldn't necessarily just be Haverhill Town Council. There are other pots of money Happycroft can point to. But equally, I don't want to not, I don't want to see these activities not taking place.
Yeah, and that's, Jen, do you want to just come back on that particular point?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's just that, and I entirely agree with what councillor Brown says, we don't want to miss out on this. You know, thi- this is a thing that we really, we should be giving to the young people and the special needs in Haverhill. And if we start putting hurdles in the way like this, I'm sure that it takes a lot of organisation in this. And that's mostly why they haven't had people turn up in the past, because they're not very, or haven't been in the past, very good at organising. They've got a particular officer, she's a new one, um, I must admit, I replied to her and she not, not replied back to me. Um, but she's new, so I'll give her that. But I don't know, you know, I, hopefully, she will be much better organised than what's happened in the past. So this, this one, I feel that we should give the whole lot, I really do. Um, and if in a, in the future, we find that there's lots of things go wrong, whoever the new council is, and obviously the officers don't know, um, in the future that something's gone wrong, that, you know, um, that they don't get enough people, or they, they, they're including other towns and, you know, other villages, I should say, and not asking them for, you know, the parish councils for money, then obviously, next time they come, if they apply again next year, we can say no. But I feel that we should go ahead with this and hopefully the new council will look at it again when they reapply next year.
Councillor Brown?
Yeah, I say, I'll just, I'd propose that we pay.
We have a proposal.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So. Can I just want to add one level thing, which is, you know, I'll remind myself again, we've been at these meetings where we've been told about these events, where, uh, people sign up and do not turn up. That is a big problem. And it's not so much the fact that Happycroft are not trying to fund the people, is that they do sign up, place is fully booked. You can actually go online, pay your twenty-two quid and, and just go if you want to. Um, I presume that's per day, I don't know. Um, but, uh, so it's very difficult. I think, I think the problem with this is this last minute dot com job, uh, job. They should have done this months ago. And perhaps it is the, what you said about the fundraiser, if you like, and that's what a person is. Um, but I think that, yeah, I think that's just, you know, if they manage to do it elsewhere, why they haven't done it here, I don't know.
Can, can I just, my understanding was that we saw that they were doing it in other places and somebody from here, and I'm sorry, I can't remember who it was, actually asked Colin i- i- if he would approach Happycroft. So actually, it's not the fact that they put their funding request in late, it was the fact that we, there wasn't a funding request at all. And I think, well, somebody from the council, and it wasn't me, actually went and said, why is everybody else getting it and, and we're not? So I don't think we can criticise they didn't put it in, John, because they obviously didn't think we were going to give them any money.
No, no, I'm not criticising, but they've, uh, other places like Brandon, Newmarket and everything else, they have put requests in. But equally, I believe with Brandon, they also went elsewhere as well for funding. Because Brandon's a bit like us, you've got the Brecklands, Norfolk. So I think they went to the Norfolk side of things as well.
Councillor Day Smith?
Yeah, just a reservation, maybe a question really. Um, Clare School, was it Clare School?
Yeah.
Mentioned on that. Did Clare not, Clare have got a town council, don't they, providing funding?
Correct.
They do have a town council.
But do, I mean, I've, which was at their website just now, I tried to see if they do grant funding, I couldn't see anything on there. They've got a town prior, perhaps I should get rid of that and fund some more activities for their residents.
Get me to do it.
They're going to get paid.
They're going to get paid, uh, fair enough.
Okay, move this on. We actually have a proposal on the table and a second one. So first of all, can we have all those in favour?
Can I just agree what we're, what we're voting on? Because I'm a little bit confused now as to what we've agreed in the end.
The proposal is for two one eight five for the May half term.
Is that it?
Yeah.
So if we wanted to change the proposal, we'd have to vote against this one.
Yeah, we've got to do an amendment.
Okay, same.
So if I can carry on, please. We've got a proposal and we've got a second one for two one eight five. All those in favour?
Three, four. So that's one present.
Okay, so now is your time to put an alternative.
No, 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 you have to put it the other way. You have to put, before you vote on the, on the substantive motion, you have to put your amendment in.
No, no, that's just fallen.
Yeah, it's a fall, it's a fall.
It has been fallen, you don't have to vote against.
No, no, because you can't.
You don't have three, hang on.
Sorry.
You just voted, you've had, what was it?
We didn't even against.
So you didn't even against, before it's lost, you didn't even against.
All words against.
Now it's lost.
Yes, but normally you don't do this, but this is the wrong way to do it.
I'd like to propose that we, um, fund what they asked for in four, but only for Haverhill children.
In proportion to the number of voters.
Exactly.
Inclined to church or whatever.
Yes, yeah, church.
It should be all primary schools.
Can I suggest a slight memo to that? But we also ask that more forward planning i- is provided, uh, that, because this feels very, you know, we, we, we want to feel, seem being proactive. Not that we've asked them to put these on. We want them to go, yes, they, they were batted back previously. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with the motion that councillor Brown is suggesting, but I, I do feel that some sort of form of message needs to go back. This is an expectation, but we want these activities being run, uh, going forward and the challenges to, how those are going to be funded. Uh, I, I don't know how that can be phrased, but, you know, I, I don't think it should just necessarily be a straight motion to, give the full amount of money without some sort of communication.
Councillor Burns?
Um, I don't actually agree with funding the whole thing for the same reasons I've said, but, um, one of the things that does worry me, if they are paying a third party organisation, why don't we just pay that third party organisation ourselves, if that's the case?
If that's the case, it's.
I know, I said if it's the case, I don't know exactly. Because, you know, their funding thing, um, is they want the entire amount of money from us for these half terms. The other part has been funded by West Suffolk, by the Department of Education and, and County. Um, so, you know, that's fine, uh, as it's, as it says somewhere amongst all this stuff here. Um, here we go. Um, so the fifteen eighty thousand, that's got nothing to do with half term, that's full, that's the, uh, as it says, Easter, summer and Christmas holidays. That's fine. So they want the whole amount from us. Um, but I, what worries me is we could control it a lot better if, you know, how do we know they're not going to have people from outside the area? We don't know. I'm not saying you shouldn't. Um, you know, if it was Kensington or someone like that, you could say, yeah, okay, because they, you know, um, equally, you know, we have people from our residents go to Kensington and vice versa. Um, it does just worry me that, um, they put this down, not really understanding what we're, what we're about. That, that's fine.
Okay.
Can I just come back on what councillor Burns has said? Um, yeah, as, as I reiterated before, if we find out that, because we, we've actually said in the proposal that we want just the Haverhill schools, including the Churchill. Um, but if we find out, or new council finds out, and the officers will note this, um, that they are, uh, doing all the village schools and what have you.
How do you get money?
They're, oh, we don't, that's the thing. But then it will go against them if they reapply, won't it? So it'd be up to the new council. So I think that, that's all covered.
Councillor Mars?
Is it not a little bit embarrassing that we saw this happening in other areas? We go and approach them and say, we don't like the fact it's happening in other areas and not here, and now we're saying we might not fund them. It feels like it's in general, it's really to say. It just feels a little bit kind of, you know, we, we, we could have just.
The problem about it being late, the application, that's getting late, it's not having fun. So we've got a proposal on the table for the full funding, proposed by councillor Brown, seconded by councillor Hannan, all those in favour? Carry it. All those against? Three. Okay, moving on, if we can, item thirteen on the agenda, it's actually twelve, it's eleven.
I want it to be eight twelve.
Item number eleven, to receive any urgent first warrants.
I want it to be eight twelve, Mr. Chair.
Item number twelve, actions taken under delegated powers. Date of next meeting, Monday, the twenty seventh of March, twenty twenty-three. And remembering that date is after the pre-election starts. Right?
Yep.
Twenty seconds, twenty seconds.
So councillors should note that the pre-election period is from the twenty second of March, so some recommendations from working parties may not be able to be adopted until after the election.
Okay. Meeting close at twenty fifty-two, many thanks indeed.